Welcome, everyone. I'm calling the March 16th City Council meeting to order. Since our last council meeting, I have issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. Due to this emergency and in consideration for the health and safety of our council members and staff and public, we have made significant changes to tonight's meeting format. Members of the City Council have been encouraged to participate remotely if they can. At this point, we will take a moment to take roll call. Please say "here" when I call your name. Councilmember De Michele? Councilmember Goodman?
Here.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Council President Hunt?
Here.
Councilmember Martz?
Present.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Here.
And Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
And just for the record, Councilmember De Michele has joined us in chambers, and I am just doing the roll call.
And I'm sorry, I could not connect to the --
And that is fine. Councilmember De Michele is present. We have several people. Well, let's just start with the council members. We have two council members with us tonight in chambers, and we have five that are working remotely. We have staff in the chambers with us this evening. Besides myself, we have our city's long-range planner Kristin Leeson, our city clerk Tina Eggers, our deputy city clerk Tisha Gieser, our deputy city administrator Andrea Snyder. Our city administrator Wally Bobkowicz is attending remotely, and our city attorney Jim Haney is also attending remotely. For those in person, the room has been physically modified to promote the safety of those attending. The city is remaining in compliance with the state's open public meetings laws and the Attorney General's COVID-19 guidance. These changes will continue throughout the duration of the civil emergency. Regarding public comment this evening, we encourage our residents to provide comments by email to citycouncil@isicuaqua.gov. However, public comments will still continue to be accepted in person this evening. Our meetings will continue to be televised, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. For those of you participating remotely, please indicate when you wish to speak using the Meeting Skype Messenger conversation. For those on the phone, I will pause at the appropriate time so you can indicate that you want to speak, and please mute your microphones when you are not speaking. For all meeting attendees, please state your name each time before speaking. Speak clearly and pause frequently. And so for council members, that means for stating a comment, a question, or emotion each time, you should start off by identifying yourself. So I would like to ask those that are here and those that are joining us remotely to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
For those of you that are not in the room, it does sound a little odd having remote participation. I said earlier to staff, it sounds like they're floating around the room with us. But this is just our new reality. Under Special Business this evening, I'd like to give a mayor's update on COVID-19. I want to start my update on Isicua's response to the COVID-19 outbreak with a reminder to our whole community. Please stay calm and stay in touch with us locally so we can provide the most current information for you and your family or your business. We are a strong and caring community, and we will get through this together. As King County Executive Dow Constantine said earlier today, people must assume that they and everyone they meet are infected. That's why social distancing is so important. Social distancing means limiting contact of people within six feet from each other for 10 minutes or longer. Today, to help limit the spread of COVID-19, King County Executive and Health Officer announced a new local health order that prohibits all gatherings with more than 50 people, prohibits gatherings of less than 50 people unless COVID-19 prevention measures are met. Indoor venues like restaurants, bars, and fitness clubs must cease operations until March 31st. Restaurants and food service establishments can remain open only for drive-through, delivery, and pickup until March 31st. Grocery stores, pharmacies, banks, gas stations, hardware stores, and shopping centers can stay open as long as they meet public health directives. Please don't buy more medical and health supplies than you need, and consider making a donation to our emergency workers if you have extras. Eastside Fire and Rescue has volunteered to collect nitrile gloves, N95 masks, hand sanitizer, or cleaning products like Clorox wipes. EFR will put them into the hands of those people that really need them, whether that is our own emergency responders or those they take care of who need those supplies. Supplies can be dropped off at EFR's headquarters at 175 Newport Way. We are so fortunate in Isicua to have a robust medical network, including Swedish Hospital. Please preserve the emergency room capacity for those with the most critical health needs. At this time, emergency rooms are overwhelmed, so please do not go to the emergency room unless you are having an immediate medical emergency. There is also a serious shortage of blood in the region. Please consider making a blood donation this week if you can. If you need to call 911 for something other than COVID-19 symptoms, it's still critical to tell the dispatcher if you have cough, fever, or difficulty breathing so they can respond with the appropriate equipment. We have dramatically shifted our typical city operations to focus on our most important services during this response, including police and emergency response, communications with our community, water, sewer, stormwater, and roadway safety, and supporting and coordinating with local social services. While our public facilities counters are closed, if you have questions, please reach out via email to help@isicuaqua.gov. We are here to help you. King County is working on a range of temporary housing options for people exposed to, at risk of exposure, or becoming ill with COVID-19. As part of that effort, King County recently announced the lease of the Holiday Inn in Isicua. Over the weekend, I heard from many community members who supported this effort to slow the spread of COVID-19, and I also received good questions about what security would be provided on site. Please be assured, we are coordinating closely with facility planners as well as local police and firefighters to keep our community safe. Meanwhile, King County's lease of the Isicua facility is short-term, and the owner intends to reopen following a renovation of the hotel. Social distancing does not mean social isolation. I am so grateful to hear our community members and neighbors are checking in with each other to run errands or simply to keep each other's spirits up. If possible, please support our local businesses, many of which are closed and will face lost revenues. A great idea is to purchase gift cards online. This supports businesses now, and cards can be used later when restrictions are lifted. And recommendations around social distancing have changed. Many of our local nonprofits and other organizations that serve our community also need assistance, especially financial assistance. You can find details of their requests on our city's website. This is a very, very quickly evolving situation, and I encourage our community to stay updated. For breaking news, check the city's Twitter account, and we are also updating our website every day at isicuaqua.gov/COVID19. I want to thank you, the Isicua community, for staying calm and being prepared and practicing safe behaviors. I want you all to stay safe. We will make it through this challenging time together. At this portion of the meeting, we move to audience comments, and this is the time audience members may address the council. The guidelines for public participation are included in the meeting agenda, and people are asked to limit their comments to five minutes. Those who signed up will be called first, and if you did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. Before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge that comments have been received from the following individuals regarding tonight's agenda. Ann Fletcher, representing the Isicua People for Climate Action, sent correspondence regarding continuation of the Land Use Code Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee. And Jen Boone, representing Imagine Housing, sent comments regarding the Arch 2019 Trust Fund. Tisha, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
No.
Would anyone like to take the opportunity to speak who has not signed up this evening? Asking a second time, and a third and final time if anyone would like to address the council this evening. With that, I'll close audience comments. We'll move on to committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Hall.
Hi, everyone. This is Zach Hall. I have three quick reports for the council. Last Thursday, the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors held a meeting at 4:00 p.m. I wasn't able to make it, so I'll let Deputy Council President Ray speak to that meeting. The next meeting of the Regional Affordable Housing Committee will be on Monday, March 30th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. We were originally scheduled to meet at the Puget Sound Regional Council Building in Seattle, but for obvious reasons, we're transitioning to a video conference or conference call. That's still TBD. This will be one of the last opportunities for us Sound Cities Association delegates to provide feedback to committee staff regarding an update to the countywide planning policies, which help instruct and inform how cities like ours should update their own comprehensive plans. And then lastly, I also serve as an alternate member on the Cascade Water Alliance Board of Directors and the King County Cities Climate Collaboration. I'm looking forward to my onboarding in both these organizations, and I'll keep you all in the loop moving forward. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember De Michele?
Thank you. On March 5th, I attended a remote meeting of the Health Yearbook Board, and we spent an hour and a half hearing from Patty Hayes, who's the Director of Seattle King County Public Health, on the coronavirus crisis. And of course, everything she told us that day is now out of date, so I won't take time reporting on that. We will continue to hold remote meetings in the future. And next week, on March 19th, the Eastside Human Services Forum will hold a meeting, and again, it will be a remote call-in meeting, and they are going to continue forward in that format for as long as it takes. So those are my two reports.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Walsh?
Hello, this is Lindsay Walsh. My last meeting with the Economic Development District Board was supposed to be a bus tour, going around to different cities to learn about their economic development. That was supposed to be last week and obviously got canceled, so other than that, I have no report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No report tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilman Martz. The Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board was supposed to hold a meeting on Thursday, March 5th. That meeting was canceled. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee held a meeting last Wednesday, March 11th, at 7:00 p.m. at Breton City Hall. There were many things on the agenda, but we basically spent the entire time discussing COVID-19 and municipal responses to COVID-19, including Isicua's own community outreach efforts, which was then shared with the other cities. It was a useful, if challenging, meeting to rattle 30 people all calling in. But I look forward to -- I think it's valuable to hear how other municipalities are doing it, and as long as this continues to go on, it'll be valuable to hold that meeting and to participate in that meeting. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors met on March 12th at 4 o'clock at Eastside's headquarters on Newport. The board received a briefing associated with the insurance renewal process. EFR received a certificate of appreciation from VFIS Solutions, who is our insurance carrier, noting the ongoing safety of the organization and the limited number of claims. VRIS indicated that EFR is doing the right things and continues with the best practices. Representatives from the State Auditor's Office provided a briefing on the 2016 through 2018 audit. The audit concluded that EFNR is operating operations complied in all material respects with applicable state law, regulation, and its own policies, and provide adequate controls over the safeguarding of public resources. The chief provided a briefing that included an update on PFAS, some discussions occurring with the city of Isicua related to City Hall Northwest and the potential of some co-location. And then on a disappointing note, Fire Ground 101 may be canceled this year as resources are needed to respond to the COVID-19 situation. I distributed a memo from the chief earlier today that summarizes the work that EFR is doing relative to COVID-19. The chief also wanted to note the leadership in planning and best practices exhibited by the Isicua Nursing and Rehabilitation Center and the excellent job they are doing in containing the outbreak. And then finally, Deputy Chief Ben Lane is leading the COVID-19 Task Force for EFNR. Just want to note that there were a number of planned agenda items that were deferred to future meetings to permit the Eastside Fire and Rescue staff to focus on more pressing issues related to the COVID-19 situation. That concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Deputy Council Ray. Council President Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt. I have two reports this evening. One is on the Title 18 Land Use Code Ad Hoc Committee. This is a committee that meets with council members and staff to discuss our land use code, and we met on March 5th. There are also several items related to the work of the Ad Hoc Committee and related to Title 18 in our packet this evening. Briefly, the Ad Hoc Committee continues to believe that this is a big opportunity to align our land use with our strategic plan and vision for the city, and so we are looking forward to broader discussions around how we can do that and engage the public in the process. In our packet this evening, there is ID 0621, which will describe more about the work of the Ad Hoc Committee and where we are. And then there's also AB 7899, which is a bill that allows the Ad Hoc Committee to continue working on scoping and on the public engagement plan for this work. The second report that I have is about a joint planning meeting between the City Council and members of the Isicua School District Board. Councilmember Ray and I met with City Administrator Bobkowicz, Isicua School District Superintendent Ron Feeley, and Isicua School Board President Marnie Meraldo, and Isicua School Board Director Harlan Gallinger. This was on March 10th. We discussed a number of topics, and this meeting will serve as a springboard for many future discussions on those topics. But importantly, we committed to continuing such meetings in the future, and we agreed to continue talking on items such as future school siting and working together to address community concerns on issues such as traffic and communication around development, use of community facilities, and planning for early education and transit-oriented development. So we will continue to discuss all of these things. We also did discuss the district's response to COVID-19, and the district's response as well as the city's response have changed considerably in the meantime. We jointly decided we would meet regularly to discuss topics of mutual importance in the future, and this will -- and also that a council member, as I'm doing this evening, will report back to council on these meetings so that council is informed. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Next item on the agenda would normally be the mayor's report, but I will not be providing additional information other than what was covered under Special Business. So we will move to the informational updates, ID 0621, Title 18 Land Use Code update, Ad Hoc Planning Committee report out. This is an informational item. There is no council action requested this evening, and I'd like to ask Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder to give us some details.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that Council President Hunt summed it up very beautifully, so I'm going to keep my comments pretty short this evening. There's additional information in the packet for this evening, but over the past year, staff and the consultant team have been able to identify what gaps there are in the Title 18 Land Use Code, what sections may require significant work, and also identify any substantive topics. In late 2019, council authorized a council ad hoc committee to work with staff on the project scope timelines and to inform on public outreach. Council President Hunt and council members Goodman and Walsh are part of that committee. And the committee is still working on this assignment. As Council President Hunt indicated, I think this is an opportunity for us to ensure that the work that's being done within the scope of the Title 18 update is in line with the community's goals, with the strategic plan, and other planning documents that we've had over the past couple of years, that we've developed over the past couple of years. So we're still in the process of doing that and discussing scope with the council ad hoc committee, and we will return to full council for more discussion once the committee has formed a recommendation. So additionally, the council ad hoc committee wishes to continue to meet throughout this project, the Title 18 update, so you will see an agenda bill authorizing them to continue to meet on the consent agenda for tonight's meeting. And that concludes my update. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions? And I'm going to look to the --
Councilmember Ray does have a question.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
I'm glad to hear that the ad hoc is making great progress. Can you talk a little bit about what our thinking is about how to engage the community or in this discussion?
Thank you for that question. This is Andrea, again. Yeah, I think that we're still in the very early stages. I think first, we're trying to figure out exactly what are these more substantive and meaty issues. I think there's a few that staff have identified, and as we work with the council ad hoc committee, once we identify what those issues are, that will help drive the public process and how we engage the public. I think that we can agree that there's no real desire to just land big, complicated chapters of code and ask public to react and have that be our only type of engagement. I think we're trying to engage public in a meaningful way, share information as much as we can, but also make sure that we are engaging public in a way that's going to be easier for them to provide input and feedback on what we're developing. But more to come.
Councilmember Walsh was inquiring?
Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. This is Lindsay Walsh. To add to that idea, I think one of the things that the ad hoc committee has come up with is that we've had a lot of community feedback over the recent years between the strategic plan and the moratorium. Everything in that has kind of brought us to this point of wanting to update the code. And so I think our general feel is we don't want to go back to the drawing board. We feel like we have a clear understanding of the direction of the community, so we want to bring them in at an appropriate time so that things don't get bogged down, because our community speaks with a very clear voice, and we don't want to ignore that and go back to them and say, "Please, tell us again." When they've said it already, and we've listened and need to show that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Do council members have any other questions or comments? I'm not seeing any in the room, and I'm not seeing any from the remote participants. So with that, we will move on to the consent calendar. Thank you very much, Deputy City Administrator Snyder. Due to tonight's meeting format, we will be taking all votes as roll call votes. The clerk will call each of your names in alphabetical order. Please state "aye" or "nay" after your name is called. We will rotate who starts first with each vote. If you are remote, please be sure to unmute your microphone after your name is called. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If they authorize, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Yes. Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
This is Council President Hunt. I move to adopt the consent calendar as listed in tonight's published agenda.
This is Chris Ray. I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. The clerk will now proceed with the roll call vote.
Councilmember De Michele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
The total of seven ayes, no nays.
Thank you. So that passes unanimously. We now move on to our regular business item, which is AB 7875, Arch 2019 Trust Fund recommendations. The action before the council this evening is to approve the resolution, and this is the first time this item is coming before the city council. I'd like to ask Kristin Leeson, Senior Planner, to give us the presentation.
Good evening. This is Kristin -- I am Kristin Leeson with the Development Services Department, and this agenda bill is to talk about the Arch Housing Trust Fund. It's an annual fund whereby we provide or allocate previously budgeted funds to proposed affordable housing projects. So with this agenda bill, we are seeking the council approval for a resolution. The resolution would allocate approximately just over $199,000 toward the city's housing trust fund monies towards six proposed projects. Each of these projects comes with a list of conditions associated with them, so it would also authorize Regional Coalition for Housing to execute these agreements and ensure that the conditions are met. The Arch Executive Board is recommending funding for six of nine projects that were submitted this year, applications that were submitted. I would like to -- I will, in a moment, introduce Lindsay Masters, who is the executive manager for Arch, and she will present information about Arch, what is on the -- some of the 2019 highlights that we've had, some local and regional accomplishments that Arch has seen, and the 2020 work program and budget, which will soon appear on a consent agenda in an upcoming council meeting. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Lindsay Masters.
Hi, this is Clerk Eggers speaking. Guest Lindsay Masters, if you are on the line, can you unmute? And we do have tech reaching out to her directly to see if they can reconnect.
Did we have her connected for a bit of time?
We did, yes.
I am talking to Lindsay, and she would like to be unmuted.
I don't see an option for unmuting. And when I right-click on it, there is no change.
Yes, I'll have her call back in.
Thank you.
Thanks for being patient while we sort this out.
Hello?
Welcome.
Good. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Lindsay, this is the mayor, and I hope you've been able to watch and hear Kristin Leeson's presentation. So we are now ready for your portion of the presentation. And we can hear you just fine.
Great. And I understand everybody has the PowerPoint that we shared in front of them. And someone there in the chambers will advance the slides as I talk through each one. So I'll just get started. Can everyone see the presentation okay? Or maybe just say if you can't.
You know, those in chambers can see it. Can we get a positive confirmation from the five remote council members that you can see the presentation materials?
This is Tolan here. I can see it.
And the rest of those remote, can you see the presentation materials? A few of them have confirmed they can see the materials. Can you give me the names? I just want to make sure that we make sure all five have it. Council members Ray, Hall, Walsh, and Hunt. Great, thank you. So it does sound like our remote members can also see the materials. You're good to go, Lindsay. If we have Lindsay? Lindsay, we're just checking in to see if you can hear us.
Really, our DNA is set up in an interlocal agreement. This is the agreement that Issaquah and other cities enter into to establish what really the undertaking of Arch is all about. So that lays out a lot of our key responsibilities.
Ms. Masters?
Yes.
Excuse me. What slide are you on?
Slide four.
All right. So we are just now picking up with your presentation. So would you like me to move to slide four? Would you like to start over?
Oh, okay. So you did not see the first three slides? Or did you not-
We did not.
...hear anything either? Okay. Did you hear what I said?
We did not.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Oh, no. All right. I'll try again. And I'm gonna, I'll pause after the first one to make sure you can hear me. So I'm back on slide two, which is the agenda.
Perfect.
Can everybody hear?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So the agenda is covering our work program and budget. We'll talk a little bit about Arch background, some of our program areas and highlights from 2019. Give you a snapshot of our impact at the regional level as well as at the local level in Issaquah. We'll share a little bit about the homeownership program assessment and some of the work that we've been doing coming out of that. We'll briefly talk about our 2020 work program and budget. And then I'll shift over to Housing Trust Fund recommendations. Next slide.
Slide three?
Yep, slide three. This slide shows you a geographic map of the Arch member cities and our sphere of influence. So we were established in 1993 through an interlocal agreement by a handful of cities and that membership has brought to now include 15 cities and King County. The purpose of this coalition is for cities to try to come together and cooperatively plan for and provide affordable housing. Next slide. We are governed by an interlocal agreement. This agreement really sets forth how we go about doing our work and what your collective undertaking is with other cities. So it includes all of our key areas of responsibility and authority. I won't read them all off the slide that you have from there in front of you. And obviously, the one we are here for tonight is to recommend funding for affordable housing. Next slide, slide five. This slide just gives you a very high-level overview of how we're organized and how we go about accomplishing all the work that is set forth in our interlocal agreement. So we are governed directly by an executive board with each member city having representation on that board. And so we're pleased to have Issaquah participate on that. We also work directly with the Citizen Advisory Board. And that board is important tonight because they are the board that comes up with recommendations for funding that are also vetted by city staff and Arch staff and are adopted by our executive board before they come to you. You, as a member of city council, have really key responsibilities. Each year, you are asked to approve our work program and budget, to approve specific allocations for funding for projects, and occasionally to consider policy recommendations that come out of our board. And then finally, there's Arch staff, who are the engine of Arch day to day. We have seven full-time staff now, and they're there to implement the day-to-day work program. And we really view ourselves as your staff, as an extension of city staff that work collaboratively with your other city staff on housing efforts. Next slide, slide six. I'll try to pick up the pace a little bit. I know it's a long presentation. So first program area we wanted to share some highlights is investment in affordable housing. We had a couple new projects open in 2019. We were able to release a larger funding announcement because of the lack of applications in 2018. So we did a lot of work to try to solicit new interest and new development partners coming in to apply for funding the trust fund. And we received a record level of requests, which we'll get into those recommendations later. But the requests amounted to $19 million in support of projects that collectively contained over 1,000 units of housing and/or shelter beds. And then we also spent a lot of time working with cities and transit agencies and others on opportunities for transit-oriented development. Next slide. So slide seven. This slide shows you one of the two projects that opened last year, the 30 Belleville Apartments, developed by Imagine Housing in partnership with St. Luke's Lutheran Church. I won't read off all the slide, but it was a, it's a fantastic project. Opened and leased up extremely quickly. Huge demand for those apartments when they became available. The next slide, slide eight. This project was the other project to open last year. And they had a dedication in the city of Summamish. This was a cottage development constructed by Habitat for Humanity. And they obviously have a unique model for homeownership. They serve families at the lower end of the income spectrum. And then as a part of those families coming into homeownership, they put many, many hours of sweat equity into constructing their homes. So it was a very happy day when that development opened. I'll keep going to the next slide. Slide nine. This was one of two groundbreakings that we had last year. This was for a major transit-oriented development project in Redmond in the Astera Park neighborhood. This was a project that was originally conceived to have 130 units of affordable housing. And through the process, development process, we found opportunities to double that to over 260 units of affordable workforce housing. And there will be a partnership with the YMCA there to host an early childhood development center on the ground floor. Next slide. The other important project to break ground last year was the Women and Families Shelter located in the city of Kirkland. And that, they are well underway into construction now and expect to be opening late summer or early fall of 2020 this year. Keep going, next slide, 11. In addition to funding, Arch has always played a role in supporting cities and housing policy and planning. A lot of this work centers around the adoption and design of incentive programs. So either land use incentives, development agreements, increasingly, the multifamily tax exemption as an incentive tool, as well as trying to share best practices around things like accessory dwelling units. Let's keep going to the next slide. Another big and growing area of work for us is housing program administration and stewardship. Kind of a two-part responsibility that we undertake on behalf of cities. One is really taking what you establish in policy in terms of requirements for affordable housing and making that a reality. So doing the contracting and writing the covenants, working directly with developers to identify the affordable units that they will build, and then helping them get either leased up or sold in quotes with those agreements. And then long-term, which is the stewardship piece, making sure that we're monitoring those so that they stay in compliance with those contracts and covenants. And that looks very different on the rental side as compared to the ownership side, which I'll talk more about in a little bit. So let's move on to slide 13. So our last program area that we engage in is education and outreach. And this means a number of different things. First and foremost, we are helping people who come directly to us looking for housing. And that's hundreds, if not thousands, of people every year who are looking for referrals. They're looking to know what affordable options exist on the east side. They're looking to be notified when there are new projects available. So we maintain an active mailing list with many, many people on it to share those notifications. We also try to partner with other community groups, with cities, to plan events and bring people together and create momentum and interest and inspiration for people to do more on affordable housing. So last year, our focus was collaborating with the East Side Interface Social Concerns Council to host a workshop for faith communities that might be interested in partnering or making land available for affordable housing. Okay, next slide. This just gives you a high-level picture of what the Housing Trust Fund itself has produced in its lifetime, the distribution of those housing projects, which we strive to distribute broadly across the east side, the different populations that are served, and then significantly, how we are able to leverage your local investments with other funds. And we've come pretty close to achieving a 10 to 1 ratio of leverage for local to other funds. The next slide, 15. This is a similar snapshot, but rather than production through direct funding, this has been, this is what we've been able to assist cities to accomplish in terms of production through either incentive programs or inclusionary housing programs, and have accomplished quite a bit in Issaquah. And you can see kind of at that chart at the bottom right that there's really been an uptick in the last few years. And that corresponds directly with the amount of development that's been undertaken, as well as the number of cities that have now adopted programs. We have at least 10 cities now that have adopted some kind of incentives, either in their land use or other forms. Next slide. So this slide shifts to focus on what has been accomplished in Issaquah. And so there's a lot of numbers on here, but the idea is to give you a picture of the range of affordability levels, the balance between rental and ownership housing, as well as the balance between projects produced with direct funding versus through incentives. And so not only have we done all those contracts and covenants, we are continuing to monitor all those developments on an ongoing basis. And we are continuing to work to bring additional projects in the pipeline online. Next slide. These next two, I think, don't have numbers. So, but this is a map that you may be familiar with as was created when you adopted your housing strategy, I believe. The majority of these are projects with city covenants. I think there are some that do not have city covenants that we don't monitor. But the vast majority are projects that Arch monitors for you. Next slide. Same thing, but this is housing above 80% AMI. Next slide. So shifting gears a little bit to talk about our homeownership program. We do have a significant number of affordable homeownership units in Issaquah. We were, we became aware of issues in the program in the fall of 2018, right when I came to Arch. And so we undertook an in-depth assessment of the program. We brought a consultant on board to help us with that evaluation. And we also did a comprehensive audit of the program. So we looked at each individual home to try to determine if homeowners were in compliance with our owner occupancy requirements. And I believe there was a question about the percentage of units that were discovered. So our process was that we looked at all units in the program, which totaled approximately 700 units. We determined that we wanted to do further investigation into about 50 of those based on the information we saw that was publicly available. Not all of those, we determined, were actually out of compliance. Some of them had good explanations for what we were seeing. But about half of those that we looked deeper into, we did conclude were out of compliance. And that came to about 3.6% of all the homes in the program. But some of the key positive findings that we, that also came out of that are that we have had some successes. We've largely been able to serve the target income households that the program was intended to find, we've got to serve. We've also provided ample opportunities for homeowners to build equity. On the downside, we had not obviously staffed the program to the level that would keep up with the growth in the number of homes that we were overseeing. So we'd had pretty much the same level of staffing.
Lindsay, this is the mayor. Council member Hall would like to ask you a quick question.
Okay.
Council member Hall?
Thank you very much. Yeah, this is Zach Hall. That was, that was one of my questions about the homeownership programs audit and the follow-up investigation. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Can you speak a little bit more to how, what went into the selection criteria for deciding to investigate those 50 units out of the whole pie?
Sure. It's a, it was a range of things. What we did- What we did for every unit was we looked at publicly available information from the county assessor to determine where people were listing their mailing address, and to see if there was a discrepancy in the mailing address versus the home address. Out to all of the homeowner associations to request that they share any information with us about homeowners that were leasing. We followed up as well on a number of tips we received from neighbors and other sources of information, so that added to the number that we looked into. And then we also paid for some data out of the, I forget the name of the database, it's the database where you can set up to have your mail forwarded when you move. So those were kind of our key data points that we looked at to try to determine who was not occupying their homes.
Thank you.
Okay, so to get back to the, some of the recommendations from the consultant, there's a much longer report with many more recommendations, and we've since created kind of a detailed tracker to make sure that we are not neglecting to implement all the things that were recommended. And we have kind of a plan over the, over the coming years to implement as many of those recommendations as we can. But first and foremost, to be able to do all the things that are considered best practices, we had to expand staffing. So we got some interim funding to be able to bring an additional staff person on full-time dedicated to the program last year, and that has made a huge difference and has been a big relief to the existing staff who all had many other duties besides homeownership. In addition, we are going to be looking at, or we have made some progress on instituting regular procedures for monitoring, so that's something that we developed a program manual and formal policies and procedures, had those adopted by the board, and are now implementing those on an ongoing basis. We also had several recommendations just around improving our systems and technology, so we did complete the purchase of a brand-new database platform, and that has also made a huge difference in kind of the workflow and the consistency in the documentation that we have for the program. Next slide. So this slide just gives you kind of a visual picture, there's a lot going on here, but it shows you approximately what the growth in the portfolio has been. Those are those two lines there, those are the number of units created through incentives and through, and through funding. So there's been a, a big uptick there since the year 2000. And we've pretty much had this, we had, until last year, had the same amount of staff during that time, so we never, never added staff to our administrative budget, until now, which we're really happy about. Next slide. So this is a one-page snapshot of our 2020 work program and budget. It's mostly highlighting the things that were new and different compared to previous years. So again, we did add, have actually two new positions. The other new position is focused on rental compliance monitoring. That's been another growing need and demand that we needed more dedicated capacity for. We added some administrative support in the form of student interns. We, we are now budgeting for all the important software licenses that we need, and as well some consultant support to implement all those things. And then as far as the work program, we're going to continue to be focused on that stewardship aspect of our work program. We are also in the process of developing specific measurable goals for housing. That's something that we hope the board will be able to reach a consensus on and make recommendations back to you as member city councils. We are also interested in trying to advance all, all opportunities for transit-oriented development on the east side, of which there are many, that are timely and we have opportunities to include affordable housing in. And then we are going to continue to discuss opportunities to try to dedicate revenue sources for housing, since as you'll, you'll see when we talk about the funding recommendations, the, the demand and the need for those resources is far greater than what we are able to fund. Finally, and these elements with a star are those that were elevated by the board as priorities for the year. The board did determine that it was important to take a step back in the same way that we did, looking at our monitoring and our stewardship functions, but looking at all of the work program areas that we have in our mission, and evaluate our capacity and look at options for expanding our capacity for that over time. Next slide 22. So this is just a snapshot of what the City of Issaquah included in our work program. Every city has the opportunity to identify work program items that they would like Arch support with, and so these were the ones elevated by Issaquah. And that is the end of work program and budget. I'll pause there in case there were any other questions that I missed.
Thank you, Lindsay. Are there any questions for Lindsay? None from those on the dais, and I am looking to see if there are any from those remotely. Councilmember Walsh?
Okay. So I'll dive right, oh, sorry, go ahead.
This is Councilmember Walsh. When you're talking about the management and monitoring of the properties, is there any kind of a service level agreement, or some way that we measure the effectiveness of managing those properties against expectations either from Arch or from the city members?
We don't have anything like a service level agreement. What we have, our primary documents that we're accountable for is, one, our, our inter-local agreement, which that's more of a high-level broad framework, but two is our work program. So we're required to report on a quarterly basis on, on our work program. And in the last year, we've tried to create more measurable metrics in, in those reports so that our, our board is, is seeing more facts and statistics about what those activities result in. But there is no kind of standard that we're necessarily trying to meet. Part of the goal in developing housing goals was to start building in some of those expectations. We started with sort of focusing on goals for production, but I think you could probably extend that to other areas of our work over time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, this is Zach Hall. Within the work plan, you had talked about this consultant, and I remember reading in the agenda packet that the consultant had recommended that Arch develop a plan for implementing new fees at the time of resale. Forgive my ignorance, but what exactly does that mean and who pays these fees?
Sure. So this is a really common feature of homeownership programs like Arch's, as a way for programs to be sustainable. They often assess a fee at the time of resale that is paid either by the homeowner or the home buyer who is purchasing the home. And so we, we actually have a provision in most of our covenants that allows for a resale fee to be collected from the owner who is selling, so it comes out of the portion of the purchase price that goes to them, to recoup our expenses for administering that resale. That's not something Arch ever chose to do in the past, even though the agreement's allowed for it, but that was a recommendation as a way for the program to start being more sustainable financially.
All right. This is Zach Hall again, as a quick follow-up. Was there intent behind Arch's decision not to originally have a fee at the time of resale?
Um, I, I can only surmise...
Like affordability for the sale?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think, while not trying to, you know, guess at what all the past decision-makers were thinking, I think our goal has always been to operate as efficiently as possible, and that's probably why our staffing did not grow with, with the growth of the portfolio. And so I think probably the, the attitude was, we've been able to operate without a whole lot of costs, and so we don't, wouldn't necessarily need to assess fees to be able to, to pay for those. But obviously, there's also a, a natural tension with, we're trying to promote wealth building and equity for homeowners, and so any, any kind of fee is going to be, have some tension with that.
Right, exactly, as long as we're being mindful of that. And I appreciate your answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions? If there are no questions, is anyone prepared to make a motion?
This is Council President Hunt, I'd like to make a motion.
Here.
Excuse me, this is Clerk Akers speaking. There may be an additional comments and presentation?
Yes.
May we proceed?
There, the presentation's not finished? Oh, sorry, okay. Lindsay, you are still on. We do not currently have the graphics for the presentation by video stream anymore, so it's just going to be your voice for now.
Oh, okay.
I will reconnect.
I, I think I'm catching what you're saying, but for some reason, when someone in the, that's present there speaks, it's very garbled.
Mm-hmm.
So are you, are you saying I should continue the presentation, but no one will be seeing the slides?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'll just keep going. Hopefully, my voice is interesting enough to keep, keep you focused.
So just, just, sorry, Lindsay, just an update, the slides are back up.
Oh, okay. So are folks able to see the slides for the Housing Trust Fund recommendations?
I'm currently on slide 23. So they will see what I'm sharing, but they will not have the in-camera view of the room. And that could also be impacting the sound that you hear.
So we can go to slide 24. This slide is just a quick recap of what the inter-local agreement lays out as our basic responsibilities for recommending funding. We, again, rely on a citizen advisory board that's made up of wonderful members of the community who dedicate their time and their spare time to provide recommendations around affordable housing. Mechanically, we rely on the City of Bellevue to be the agents, the legal entity to do the contracting, so we're the staff support for that, but all of your financial accounts sit with the, in, within the City of Bellevue. Next slide. This is a high-level overview of the process we go through to develop recommendations and ultimately to fund projects. So each year, you determine in your budget process what you want to make available, and we then announce that collective amount in a set of funding guidelines in cooperation with other state funders across the state. We also collaborate on all of the technical application forms and requirements so that development partners have a single application that they have to do for every single fund source of the state. We have a pre-application process to try to encourage interest, to give guidance to applicants as they're putting their proposals together. And then we have a formal review process after applications are submitted, usually in September. So our staff thoroughly review those. We also invite member city staff to weigh in on the proposals, and then we have obviously our citizen advisory board deliberate over the course of three to four different meetings based on, to come up with recommendations that meet what the executive board has set out as their priorities and their evaluation criteria. It is a, it is a challenging process because we have a lot of moving pieces. As I mentioned before, local resources are only a small portion of, of what actually funds the projects fully. So we're doing a lot of coordination with other public funders. We are trying to validate all the assumptions around private funding that go into projects, and those then inform the ultimate recommendations that go through our executive board and then finally get advanced to you. Once city councils have approved funding, then we go and contract for those funds directly. We develop all the legal documents, loan documents, and work with the other lenders and investors in the project. We disburse funds through construction, and then we obviously monitor the occupancy on a, on a long-term basis. Next slide 26. So there are a lot of key principles that have driven the trust fund and I think made, continue to make it a really relevant and excellent strategy for cities to do investment. There are a lot of jurisdictions around the country that look to this as a model, knowing that it's really difficult to do this on your own as a, as a single city, if you are a smaller or mid-sized city. So one of those, I'll just quickly run through the principles. There is a philosophy of supporting across jurisdictions so that you are getting credit for any investment that you make in the region. We have a large, we are able to create a large enough pool of competition that way so that we can have a rigorous competition that advances the best projects each year. We are able to do that coordination, I think, because of the scale that we can achieve regionally, so that we are maximizing the return on your investment. And we also are ensuring that there is generally geographic equity across the east side so that not all of the affordable housing is concentrated in any one particular area. We have, again, the citizen advisory board that ensures projects are shaped by community perspectives and additional professional expertise. We've got lawyers, architects, other folks from the lending and other parts of the real estate industry who are on our board and really grateful for their expertise. We also place great importance on sustainability. There, I believe there was a question about capital investment versus long-term operating support for some of these projects. That is always a consideration in the underwriting process when we look at any proposal. So we are actively trying to vet the assumptions that developers are making about those resources with folks in, that work in human services and other, and other potential sources of funds long-term. And then finally, we really try to elevate east side projects. So in that coordination I talked about with other public funders, we are doing our best to make sure that east side projects are competitive for those county resources and those statewide resources.
Lindsay, we have a question from Councilmember Walsh. Lindsay, we have a question from Councilmember Walsh.
Okay.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. The question about infrastructure versus operation funding was mine, and that is actually more about, I know in many of our instances as a city, we can potentially get money from certain funding sources, whether that's state or federal, tied to infrastructure projects. We can build a road, but there's never money that is set aside for maintenance and operations and those types of things. And so I think I'm seeing a similar instance here where you can get money, you can get money for building the building, but where you're struggling is being able to afford to maintain and do the operations of Arch. And so I'm wondering if you could talk about the difference between those sets of monies and whether there are that type of restriction? Because one of the things you talked about was potentially taking and adding a fee on to the selling homeowners as a way to fund operations. But I'm wondering if there's any way to take money from the infrastructure side of things and maybe build one less housing unit in order to operate the program efficiently overall?
Yeah, that's a good question. And I think my original answer was focused on the operational cost for the agencies that own and operate the housing. We are more in an oversight and monitoring role, so we don't have primary responsibility for, like, replacing the roof and things like that. So if you're talking about our operations, interestingly, Arch is unlike other funders in that the funds we put into capital investments are almost all local general fund dollars, so they're flexible funds that can be used either for operations or for capital investments. And so I think it's a decision on an annual basis how cities want to balance where they put their funding. We've, I think I mentioned earlier, there's always been a desire to keep our staffing costs low so that any new funding can go into projects. But we've obviously been kind of reevaluating the importance of the stewardship component of what we do and making sure that all the products we've helped to create are sustainable long-term. So, yes, the money can be shifted one way or another, but we always kind of want to maximize what is available for building new projects as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Shall I continue?
Yes, please.
Okay. So now I'll run through the projects, and I'll just preface this by saying, usually we have Klaas Mayhouse, who's our senior planner, present this part of the presentation, so I'll do my best to represent for him. But any questions I can't answer, we'll be happy to follow up afterwards. So the first project that was recommended for funding is a senior housing project. This is slide 27, proposed by Imagine Housing, and this is on land made available by the City of Bothell. The recommendation here is for partially funding the request to enable Imagine to purchase the property and then take a little bit more time during the next year to further develop the project. There were some goals to try to better maximize the site and possibly increase the number of units that could be built there. And so those are things they'll be evaluating in the next year. But this funding will enable them to advance and at least purchase the property. Slide 28. So this is a proposal that is not new. It is a refresh and evolution of a proposal that Arch cities previously funded, I want to say in 2014 or 2015. And this is for development of a permanent men's shelter year-round operated by congregations for the homeless. So they obviously had citing challenges the first time around, have since found a new location to site the shelter, which is great news. Found a piece of property owned by King County Solid Waste. And they went through a thorough process to identify all the potential sites and landed on this one. It is a large site. It is much larger than the sheltered needs, so the part of obtaining site control for this site was locating a development partner to help them serve as the master developer and make sure that they could move forward with their piece for the shelter. So this recommendation would fully fund the construction of the shelter. They've also received full funding awards from all the other public funding partners for the project. Next slide, 29. So this is the companion project for the shelter. It's called Polaris at East Gate. It is being developed by Inland Group out of Spokane. They are a for-profit development company that specializes in affordable workforce housing. They are able to, they are vertically integrated, so they're able to achieve significant efficiencies in construction that allow them to build at a greater scale, which is exciting because they will be able to deliver approximately 300 units of workforce housing on this site. Next slide, slide 30. So you see a similar lineup here. This is a partnership with the Together Center, who also elected to partner with Inland Group and Horizon Housing Alliance. This is the result of many years of visioning and strategic planning for the Together Center to redevelop their campus in Redmond, not only to expand and improve all of the spaces for the social services and other tenants in Together Center, but also to use the airspace that they have above them to build a significant amount of affordable housing. And so they've created a really strong partnership there. They'll be working with Hope Link to provide services to approximately 60 homeless families that will have access to units in the 9% portion of the project. And they are working on obtaining the remainder of the funding that we weren't able to fully fund. So we have fully funded the first phase and a portion of that second phase, which is the 4% phase, and that's the larger building you see in the picture there. And we're working on helping them to obtain the rest of that funding so that the whole project can move forward. Next slide. So these are the last two projects. These are smaller-scale projects developed by Community Homes, a longtime partner of Arch. They have a model of serving individuals with developmental disabilities that creates a really supportive living environment that has a live-in caretaker. They have two homes that they're, that we're proposing to fund. One is a model that they have done seven times prior. This would be their eighth adult family home, and so they're able to serve five individuals in one home with that caretaker. And then they are also expanding to another model called their shared living model, which serves individuals with higher needs at a lower ratio, so three individuals in one home. And they also were successful in obtaining the other funding awards they need in addition to Arch's award. Next slide. So this gives you a picture of all the projects together, the number of affordable units and shelter beds that are impacted by this collective funding, the ranges of affordability provided within those projects. And then final slide, slide 33. This is a detailed breakdown of each city's contribution to each project. There is, in that first column, you'll see a portion of the total $5 million is coming from community development block grant funds, which is broken out between direct earmarks from Kirkland, Redmond, but also set aside for all of the Northeast consortium cities, including Issaquah. And that, I'll end it there and happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Lindsay. Any more questions from councilmembers in attendance? Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you, Lindsay. That was a great presentation. And the projects that are being recommended are, look like they've really been fully vetted. On the companion projects, the East Side Men's Shelter and the Polaris at East Gate, if it sounded like, or looking through the cons on, or the challenges being faced by those two developments, if they fail to complete those projects, is the funding then returned back to Arch, or how does that work?
Yeah, it's a good question. So obviously, for all of the ones that we are partially funding and that have additional hurdles to get over to become fully funded, we will not be releasing any of those funds until they have secured their other financing. So until we have the confidence that the projects can succeed, we have a condition that we won't disperse the funds in advance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from those in chambers? I'm not noting any other questions from those attending remotely, but I will give you a few seconds to chime in. Okay. No additional questions. Thank you for the presentation, Lindsay and Kristen. Is there a motion?
This is Council President Hunt. I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve resolution number 2020-5. Authorizing the duly-appointed administering agency for Arch to execute all documents necessary to enter into agreements for the funding of affordable housing projects as recommended by the Arch Executive Board utilizing funds from the city's Housing Trust Fund.
Is there a second? Councilmember Goodman?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? I'm just delaying a little bit to see if there is any more comments from those that are remote.
This is Council President Hunt. I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, please.
I just wanted to express my gratitude to Lindsay for presenting all about the work of Arch, and I wanted to thank Arch for working on this important issue and partnering with the city. And I also wanted to acknowledge some of the comments that we've received from the community in support of this Arch funding. And the mayor also, the mayor also spoke to this comments as well. But we did receive correspondence in support of this Arch funding from Jen Boone of Imagine Housing, and signed on by Rick Tony and Mitra Mohandessi, also of Imagine Housing. And then previously, this topic had been scheduled for a discussion at a work session, and at that time, we also received comments from two community members, Steve Pereira and Elizabeth Mopan, both supportive of Arch and also supportive of finding more ways to improve housing affordability, and Elizabeth Mopan specifically speaking to homeownership and the importance of that. So I wanted to thank Arch, and I'm supportive this evening of this, and I look forward to discussing other ways that we can, as a city, support affordability in the future, including the use of a portion of the Washington sales tax, which will be a future discussion. But I look forward to supporting Arch as well as finding other ways we can support the needs of our community for affordable housing.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Are there any other councilmembers that would like to make a comment? Not seeing any in the room, and not seeing any remotely. If there's no further discussion, the motion before the council is to approve resolution number 2020-5 authorizing the duly-appointed administering agency for Arch to execute all documents necessary to enter into agreements for the funding of affordable housing projects as recommended by the Arch Executive Board utilizing funds from the city's Housing Trust Fund. The city clerk will now proceed with a rule call vote.
Councilmember Goodman? Aye. Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember DeMichele?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Lindsay, and thank you, Kristen. We're going to move on to the next item, which is good of the order, and I'm looking to see if any councilmembers in attendance have anything for good of the order. Councilmember Goodman, followed by Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge and all of the hard work that's been going on in front of the scenes, behind the scenes, in light of unprecedented times. And I've just been very impressed with, the city has not only been responsive but very proactive, and I want to stay on behalf of the community that I really appreciate, and thank you very much for everybody at the city who's working very, very hard.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember DeMichele?
I simply echo Councilmember Goodman's comments. It's been incredibly impressive to receive almost constant communication and that going out to the public, to see people working overtime to help us adjust to this new reality. And I'm just incredibly proud of our staff and all of the hard work that they've been doing. And many thanks, many thanks.
Thank you. That's lovely, Councilmember. I also see Councilmember Hall would like to make a comment.
Yes, thank you. This is Zach Hall. I have two things that I wanted to mention tonight for good of the order. One, on COVID-19, I just wanted to reiterate a few important points from Governor Inslee and County Executive Constantine's press conference this morning that I thought were particularly helpful commentary. First, and I thought the governor said it best, if you're thinking about having a group of 49 people in the same room, because it's fewer than 50, think again. And I'm very happy that most people understand this important point now. It's not just about you and I getting sick, it's about our loved ones getting sick or those who are at greater risk getting sick, and it's about not overwhelming and stressing our healthcare system or our waste management services. And the way I see it, because of this, it's really our civic responsibilities as a citizen of this state and as, and our country to practice social distancing, to stay at home more often than you usually would, and binge-watch whatever you're watching on TV for as much as you can for the next two weeks. Second, I think Executive Constantine said it best this time when he said our resilience should be measured by the takeout box. And during these two weeks of social distancing and self-quarantine, I want to urge everyone to patronize the takeout and delivery options of our local restaurants and coffee shops here in Issaquah. I just want to urge everyone to do their best to support the people who support us so well. And then second, completely unrelated, I also wanted to thank the students and staff of Gibson Act High School. I was actually pleasantly surprised to discover I was given a community member of the month award by them, and it's really me who should be thanking them. The students of Gibson Act have such great can-do attitudes, and they're so full of an eagerness for hands-on learning, and it's just very refreshing. So after this period of social distancing and once schools have been reopened, I'd encourage businesses and organizations with local opportunities for student internships to reach out to Gibson Act High School to see how you can contribute to their learning, because it's just great. And that ends... And that ends my remarks.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. I wanted to let council and the community know that one of my goals is to make sure that correspondence that is received by city council continues to be responded to in a timely fashion, and I wanted to let you know that I'm working with the communications department at the city and with the administration of the city to make sure that we are consistent in our messaging. This had come up last time council met because it's really important that we have the most up-to-date information about COVID-19 in particular and about what we can do to support the safety of our community right now. So, I will be consistently working with the administration to make sure that we have the most up-to-date and consistent messaging for any correspondence to city council around or related to COVID-19 or the city's response to COVID-19.
Thank you, Council President. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at Good of the Order? I wanted to add a few comments, a shout-out to some of our staff that have worked very hard on this and are not in the room, but apparently Gus Taiwan may now be a councilmember since his picture is showing up with yours. So, yeah, we will work on that and make sure that it's, you're able to tell who's council and who's staff. But thank you, Gus, and thank you, John from IT. You've been a part of this meeting while the public can't see it. You've been very helpful in helping us troubleshoot. And also, Tim and Wes, who, from our communications group, were doing the video work tonight. It was very difficult to put all these pieces together, and the next council meeting may be different again. I'm not sure that we will be having any of the councilmembers or mayor having the opportunity to be in the room even with social distancing. So, I want to thank you all also for helping. Upcoming council meetings. Due to the public health recommendations concerning community gatherings, the city council regular meetings will continue to be held but in a modified format and maybe even a different format than we did this evening. If we need to, a special meeting may be scheduled. April 6 is the next regular city council meeting at 7:00 p.m., and all other public meetings are canceled for the foreseeable future. There is no executive session this evening, and with thanks to all, we are adjourned at 8:35.